Good evening and welcome to the September 12, 2016 Hillsborough Township Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting into order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on September 8, 2016, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky, Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Dudda?
Yeah.
Mr. Gillette, Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. I'll read a motion to go into executive session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the act, in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate note, I'm sorry, resolved by the Board of Education, the township of Hillsborough, and the county of Somerset and state of New Jersey as follows: A, the matters to be discussed are negotiations with the Hillsborough Educational Association, personnel matters, and a student matter. The matters discussed in executive session shall then, shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Like to entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Sub move.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're going to executive session. We'll be back at 7:30 for the regular meeting. Thank you. All right, great. Thank you and welcome to the September 12, 2016 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. We're back from executive session. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Dudda?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. If we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have correspondences listed in the agenda, and I'd like to hand it off to the superintendent for his report. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Kent. Every year, we have opportunities for members of our school community to come up and spotlight the work that they're, that they're doing. This evening, we have Mr. Enrique Pinque, who's the supervisor of world language and the ELL program, who will share with us some information about the summer program for children whose, whose language that's used at home, the first language, is not English. So, please, if you wouldn't mind, giving a big round of applause to Enrique Pinque, our supervisor.
Thank you, Jordan, for that introduction, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of the board. We're just, bear with us a couple minutes while we bring the slides up. Thank you. So, I want to tell you a little bit about our ELL summer enrichment program. Before I start to tell you a little bit about the summer program, I want to share some information with you regarding our ELL population. So, there are over 30 languages and 60 ethnic groups represented in our population. That's within our ELL population in, in the Hillsborough district. If we talk about the entire district population, those numbers almost double. So, think about that for a minute. This is not very typical for a New Jersey school district to have that much diversity. In a school district like ours with the population of ELLs that we have, typically for a district who has 180, 200 ELL students in their district, you'll see half of that diversity. So, we have a very diverse group. I wanted to highlight two groups, the Hispanic and the Indian groups. You see them there. It's 36.7 percent of our ELL population for Hispanics and 33.6 percent for Indian population. These two groups always fluctuate from year to year between the first and second place on our list. I find it very interesting that our Hispanic group, they share one common language. They all speak Spanish, obviously with variations and different accents depending on where they come from, but they could come from 21 different countries, or what I like to say, 21 plus one, which is the US. There's 40, there's over 40, probably more million, 100 million people speaking Spanish in this country. The Indian population has a different situation. They come from one country, but they have 30, over 30 different languages and dialects that they, they have. So, when we come, when they come here, we have to assess them and we have to make sure that all of our groups, regardless of where they come from and what their situation is, acquire the English language. So, we're going to keep that in mind, and now I'd like to share more information with you. This demographic that you see here is for free and reduced, free and reduced lunch. 7.9, almost 8 percent of our entire student population here in Hillsborough qualifies for free and reduced lunch. 17 percent of those students on free and reduced lunch are ELL, English language learners. 60.9, only 60, almost 61 percent of our ELL qualify for free and reduced lunch. So, on that, on that last bullet, we're comparing ELL who qualify for free and reduced lunch with the entire ELL population. That's the majority of our students qualify for, for free and reduced lunch. Now, I, as you heard, the superintendent, our focus here today is to tell you a little bit about the ESL summer program, the summer enrichment program. But in order to better understand that, the program and what the program does for our students, I want to share a little bit of history with you. There are 74 registered, there were 74 registered students in 2010. That's when we first started the summer program. That's six years ago. Four teachers, two buses, and two field trips. Two different field trips for, one for the younger students and another one for the older students. Fast forward six years, and you'll see 118 registered students, seven teachers, one coordinator, three buses, three field trips, major field trips. We have longer days, those days that we have field trips, and three educational presentations. So, that gives you a sense of what kind of growth we've had since 2010. I apologize for the, the slide. I think it's probably like a different font it was used, and it's not in the computer that's being used. But I wanted to highlight this as well. Are we popular? Is the summer, is the summer enrichment program popular? Back in 2010, 59 percent of our population attended the summer program, the ELL population. Fast forward six years, 75 percent of our population attended the summer program. That's the majority of our students attend the summer program. And I got to tell you, after Christmas typically, you know, I start get phone, getting phone calls from the community, the parents, asking me when the summer program is going to start, what are the summer program dates, because they are that interested in having their children participate in the program. The remaining 25 percent, I got to tell you, probably that, that 25 percent that doesn't attend is because they are not in the country at that point. Now, you may ask yourself why I share this, I wanted to share this demographic with you. I think it's very important for us to understand the diversity that we have in our ELL group and the different backgrounds that they bring. They all bring different dreams, different, different languages, different cultural backgrounds, different economic backgrounds. They don't have the same experiences, so I think it's very important to highlight that before sharing this, some of this data with you. It's very difficult for us to compare apples to oranges. When we talk about ELL, and I apologize again for this slide, when we, when we talk about ELL, it's very difficult for us to compare, say, if you have a third grade student that's an ELL student, and if you have a third grade student who's a mainstream classroom student, if you compare the same assessment, if you have the same data, it's not fair to have, make that comparison, because they're in very different places. If you have a third grade student who's an ELL, and you have another third grade student who is also an ELL, it's still not fair to make that kind of comparison based on a standardized testing. They could be in completely different places. One student maybe had a lot of English input in the first seven years of his life. Another student probably maybe didn't have as much input in English the first five, six years of his life. So, it's very, it's very difficult to gauge and make that comparison. What we can do, however, is track the amount of time that they have spent in our program. And so, I had some data that I wanted to share with you here on the slide. I'm going to read it to you because it's not clear on, on the, on the screen, but what it should say, on the far left, you have the years that the student have spent in the ELL program. You have less than one year, less than two years, and three years or more. If you were able to see this appropriately, on the second column, you would see 2010 on the heading, and on the far right, you will see 2016. The comparison that I wanted to make there was that prior to the summer program, we were exiting very few students. We exited eight students in, in one year or less. We exited three students in two years or less, and 18 students, three years or more. Fast forward six years, we exited 33 students after one year of service, 30 students after three years, and, I'm sorry, two years, and 21 students after three. Let me see if this is any better. No, it's not. Sorry about that. I wanted to show you the percentages. I guess the highlight of, of this slide was supposed to be years two, year one, and year two. Looking at the percentages, because you may be thinking, okay, back in 2010, we had very few students. Now, in 2016, we have a lot more students, and you would be correct. The percentages show, show you a true picture of what, who, who's exiting and when, and how many. And so, in, if you were to see this appropriately, in less than one year, under 2010, you would see 27.5 percent, and in 2016, 39.2 percent. So, we are exiting more students under one year compared to 2010. On, on the second row, less than two years, we went from 10.3 percent to 35.7 percent. That's a huge jump, you know? So, we are not only exiting more students, we're also exiting them earlier. On the, on the third row, you should be able to see 62.1 percent for 2010 and 25 percent for 2016. What that says is that now, we're not taking as much time to exit those students when they're ready for the mainstream classroom. I wanted to take this time, once again, thank you for, for the opportunity. I wanted to take this time to do three things. You know, I wanted to create some awareness of the, the diversity that we have in, in our group, in our ELL group. You know, I, through the years, I have seen them all. I have seen that child whose very wealthy parents came here because they were hired for three years as consultants for a multinational company. And I have seen the single mother, mother of three, who has to have three jobs to, you know, just put food on the table. I've seen the young gentleman, the young, the young man and the young girl who has to work at Applebee's, washing dishes for three nights a week and come back home at 3:00 in the morning. I've seen it all. And, and let me tell you, that's one of the points that I wanted to make, is just the very, very different groups. The other point I wanted to make is tell you a little bit about the support and the programs that we have. In this particular case, the summer program, we have many programs that aid, that help our students and parents, you know, with their specific, very specific needs. We have literacy nights for our parents. We have literacy nights in Spanish as well. We involve the community. We involve our, our high school students from the honor societies. We have volunteer, teachers who come and volunteer their time to help us out. We sit down on the floor, on the carpet sometimes, to teach the parents how to read, the books to the children. We, we have the literacy nights for the children as well. They come in. Sometimes we feed them if we can. We, we do as much as we can to make sure that our students are, and our students, our students' needs are being met appropriately. At the last thing I wanted to do is I wanted to thank all of those involved in, in making this summer program happen. All the administration, thank you for all the support. All the board members, thank you for the support. The teachers, you know, I got to tell you, just like the parents are in December, dialing that number to see when we're doing a summer program, they just start to prepare their lessons just after Christmas. Start asking me, what are we doing? What is our theme? Where are we going? What trips are we taking? So, they can start planning early. Way, way beyond, we start remunerating them for their services. So, I wanted to thank all the teachers, and I wanted to thank everyone involved. If I start naming, you know, people, I swear I would never finish anywhere, the, the transportation department, the Board of Education Administration, my secretary, my coordinator, and all the teachers, the staff in the school, from the custodian who cleans the floor to the ones who come and maintain the air conditioning units when we're here in the summer. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for all the support. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Pinque.
Seeing no questions, Mr. Pinque, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Also, kudos to your staff for a wonderful summer program. Although it was, we didn't actually see it on the chart, the data was quite impressive at the improvement our English language learners are making, and it has to do with wonderful teaching, excellent leadership, and kids that are very much engaged in the program. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinque.
Now, continuing, before I begin my comments, I ask for everyone in the room just to join with me in a moment of silence to mark the day after the 15th anniversary of the 9/11 terrorist attacks. So, please join with me in a moment of silence. At this time, we remember all of those who have lost their lives, as well as those first responders. 15 years ago, our country was the victim of the largest terror attack in our country's history, but out of the ashes rose a country that was more patriotic immediately after that than I've ever seen in my lifetime, and hopefully we can get back there again. I appreciate your, your moment of silence. Some wonderful news that I'd like to share with, with our audience, the board, and members of the public. I'm pleased to share with you this news from around the district. On September 6, Hillsborough staff members welcomed over 7,200 students to the 2016-2017 school year. All of our schools are in the process of holding their annual back-to-school nights to welcome parents and guardians to the school community as well. I want to thank all of the staff members who worked so hard to make sure that everything ran smoothly for the start of the school year. Congratulations to the students and staff and administration and parents of Hillsborough High School. This month, NJ Monthly ranked Hillsborough High School as one of the top public schools in the state of New Jersey. Hillsborough was listed as number 47 among the 337 ranked high schools. New Jersey compiles and publishes this list every two years. The magazine's rankings are based upon data reported by schools, the State Department of Education, as well as such factors as student participation in visual and performing arts classes, percentage of students taking AP or international baccalaureate classes of any kind, student faculty ratio, the sum of standardized rank scores for students scoring 15, 50, or better on SATs and other indicators. I wanted to take this opportunity and commend Hillsborough High School family for this great achievement. Congratulations to students, staff, administration, and parents. We, we started this school year, in fact, our transportation was, was very smooth, but we did certainly have some hiccups, in particular at the high school, where we had some mold in classrooms that we had to close, particular classrooms. We are in the process of remediating, retesting, and getting kids back into those rooms once they are clean and ready to go. I've asked Mr. Mahmood to share a little bit more of the details on that. Mr. Mahmood.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. We, we do had, at the beginning of the year, we had 12 spaces at the high school that were identified positive for mold. We, since then, have now been able to remediate and now bring it to five spaces at the high school that have, that still need to be remediated, of which, on the five spaces, we have three instructional rooms, one non-instructional room, and the auditorium. So, we have been working very closely with our professionals. In this case, it's RK Occupational Environmental Analysis. The company has been around for a long time. The gentlemen, the principal owners of the company are here in the audience today. I do want to thank you. I know that they spent a lot of weekends with us and working with the high school administration to help us get through a lot of this remediation. So, and I indicated to the board president that they are here. If there are any specific questions about the mold, we'll certainly try to answer those questions with our professionals.
Thank you.
What was the root cause for such mold? Do you know that?
There are, based on what we've already discussed, and we did get a report from our environmental specialist, and there are so many different reasons. I mean, there are seven different possibilities. I can rattle some of them off to you, but none of them are clearly, you know, we couldn't hone in on one specific reason. It, it could be just the balancing of air. It could be humidity. We did have a really bad August. There were so many. We had unplanned, unplanned airflow pathways, negative pressure in the buildings, improper modulation of the system. These are things that they shared with us that can all lead to it. Unfortunately, we couldn't hone in on one of those nine areas, but they're still looking. They're still trying to identify it.
So, so, once we solve or resolve some of this stuff, I mean, how can we guarantee that it could not happen again?
Guarantee is a tough word with mold, however. We, we can put some precautions in place that will help us prevent it. Like I said, it was a tough, and also, the, the gentleman shared with me that other school districts are facing this. We're not the only school district. There are other school districts that are dealing with similar type problems, so we're, we're going to be preventive in the future, but we need to drill down on, on more of the source before we can say, you know, we'll, we'll get control. But I think we have decent control over it as we speak.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah, we have, we also had two days on Thursday and Friday of this past week that were exceptionally hot, and I can tell you that any room that did not have air condition, describe it in one word, it was miserable. Our principals did a very nice job at trying to circle or cycle classrooms through air-conditioned areas that, that were available, either libraries or in this building here in, in the cafeteria, but it was still very difficult and very challenging. We have, we have nine different schools with nine different levels of air conditioning. It is a complex process to, to try to maintain comfort when it is that hot. I have spoken with Mr. Mahmood and our Buildings and Grounds Department to investigate whether we can provide at least some temporary cooling in certain large locations so that during excessively hot days, we can gather in a room and have instructional activities in an area that isn't 90 degrees plus or so. We're doing what we can at, at this time with it. So, we'll stay tuned. We'll be talking more at the operations committee about, about some ideas that we have. Right, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. And with regard to that, as, as we get updates from the administration on strategies for dealing with excessive heat, we can also look at that as a board from a policy perspective. So, I'll ask that to also be considered through the operations committee.
I just have a question about what Dr. Schiff was saying. There isn't a way for like an early dismissal when that happens?
Yeah. A few years ago, I actually did an early dismissal in the district, but I did the entire district. Since then, we have air-conditioned the 100, 200 wing of the high school, as well as the second floor here at Aris. So, we have a lot more rooms available that are climate-controlled than we did three years ago. That's kind of good news, bad news, because if, then we closed, it's very difficult to close part of the district because we are on a tiered busing system. So, it's much easier to close the entire district at the time or to early close that way. But whenever we do an early dismissal, the, we need to make certain especially that our youngest students are going home to homes where there's an adult present, and we need to provide good lead time in order to do it. It may, it is, it'd be very difficult to do it under these circumstances that we, that we had on Thursday and Friday in order to, to make that work. That's why I think the long-term solution is to continue to provide additional cooling. Short-term solution, I think, is to provide at least temporary cooling in large areas to provide relief to our teachers and our, and our students.
I, Tom, I?
Yeah.
So, Dr. Schiff, did any other area schools have an early dismissal? Maybe a, like, they decide the day before? Do you know of any, or?
There were none in 100, in Somerset County. We do have schools in Somerset County that don't have air conditioning similar to ours. There were school early dismissals in some districts. I think New Brunswick closed early. There were some other schools. I read an article about that, but no, nothing in, in Somerset County closed on Thursday or Friday.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Okay, so, no other questions? Thank you. Is that the end of the superintendent's report?
That is, thank you.
Okay. We'll continue on with the agenda and approval of the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the executive minutes from July 25, 2016.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
Got it. You're abstaining? Got it.
And Jim?
And Jim? Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Like to entertain a motion to approve the July 25, 2016 regular meeting minutes.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
You, Tom.
And Jim?
And Jim? Got it.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Like to entertain a motion to approve the August 22, 2016 executive session minutes.
Sub move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
Who was the abstainer?
Uh, we had John, Deena, and...
Got it.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Like to entertain a motion to approve the August 22, 2016 regular meeting minutes.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Any other questions?
Somebody beat.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
Same three.
You got it.
Nope.
Thank you.
That was there.
Okay.
I was here. So, my apologies. Even in the executive session, I was here, so.
Vote's already been taken. It's all right.
Motion passed.
It passed anyway.
Okay. Before we, there are two public input sessions, but before we do that, I'd like to inform the public and the board with regard to a revision to one of the action items. This is for item action 10.1, which was motion to approve resolution to terminate a staff member. That has been amended to read motion to approve suspension of staff member, and the recommended action is to approve the suspension with pay of a district staff member whose name is on file in the superintendent's office effective September 26, 2016, or actually, that would be as of today.
Yes.
As of, as of September 12, 2016.
Is it 10.1 or 10.2? Because there's two.
10.1.
10.1.
10.1, the first one.
First one. Okay. All right. Now, we're going to have public, so, this public input session's actually on a number of district policies and regulations. So, there is a state law that a number of district policies and regulations be provided to the public and to the board for review on an annual basis, and these include policies on affirmative action for school and classroom practices, acceptable use for using computer network, electronic communications between teaching staff members and students, electronic communications between support staff members and students, management of life-threatening allergies in school, both a policy and a regulation, policy on diabetes management, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, dating violence at school, substance abuse and drug-free school zones, student discipline code of conduct, both policy and regulation, assaults by pupils on board members or employees, both policy and regulation, removal of students for assaults with weapons offenses, both policy and regulation, and lastly, a policy on Familiar Educational Rights and Privacy Act. So, if anybody has any public input... So if anybody has any public input with regard to any of those policies and regulations that I just read, please feel free to come up to the dais. And then also, after public, I'll see if there's any input from board members. Okay, seeing none from the public? Any from board members? Okay, thank you. That was our annual review. Now I'd like to open up to comments for the board and public. This is with regard to either new business or the action item. And we very much value and welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings when the public is invited to speak. One time is right now. For any item that's listed on tonight's action agenda or new business, there'll be another public forum towards the end of the meeting about any topic. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. And before you make your comment, please state your name and address, group affiliation, if there are, and as appropriate. Thank you.
Hi, Jean Trujillo, Five Eric Court. I have a question about the mold that you'd mentioned in the nine spaces at the high school. My question is, how was the mold first discovered? Then, were these spaces that they were discovered in, are they un-air-conditioned spaces? And thirdly, are the other schools affected and are they being inspected?
Sure. The answer to your question is, how was it identified? There was a visual. Staff and teachers identified the first place, indicated something didn't look right. The spores, the mold spores, were dark. We then immediately called our environmental specialist to come down, take a look at it. They obviously, they did a visual, but then they have to test it, and the lab results of those tests came back positive in those areas. Your second question was, so that's how we identified it? Second question?
The second question was, were these spaces that the mold was found, were they un-air-conditioned spaces?
It varied. Some were, some weren't. So it's, so it didn't mean whether it's an air-conditioned or not. Some were out of the twelve and some were not.
Okay. And then finally, the other eight schools?
Our environmental specialist, whenever we get a report, we did get a report at one of our elementary schools, and our environmental specialist, I believe, on a Saturday was working on the high school, got the report, went to the elementary school. So when there is any sighting or any concern, our deployment of our environmental specialist is immediate. So it's based on visual. They go out, they take a look. We are fortunate, our staff as well. If they feel something doesn't look right, they inform us. Our custodians, our building custodians, have also been notified. So we're, we got our eye on this. We want to make sure that we remedy where maybe, there may be some issues.
So you had mentioned that the environmental company had issued a report. Will that report be available to the public?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
They're actually here tonight as well, so if you have specific questions, but that report.
Well, it would be nice to know what specific mold spore it was. Was it, I mean, like, very dangerous?
Gentlemen, do you want to, or do you want us to just share the report with the public? How do you feel, gentlemen?
That's, that's just a summary report. It's not actually a recommendation or anything like that. So as for diesel pestling, which is typical for drying arid, so, that was drafted over the heat in, on, towards that higher levels than outdoors, or higher, we expect, to dry arid, that's diesel pestling, or some others, which you could be able to keep the staff engaged in the long run. So for this case, there are many other states that, uh, does, uh, communicate with your activities.
And that is Mr. Mike McGinnis. He's one of the principal owners of RK Environmental.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jane Stats, Devonshire Court. And I'm, not only am I a resident of Hillsborough, but I am proud to say that I was a math teacher at Hillsborough High School for eighteen years and also an HEA member. Unfortunately, that fact often makes some people believe that my motives are suspect and that my words should then be dismissed. Rather, as someone with a total of thirty-two years of teaching experience, I, like my colleagues, should be viewed as an expert in the field of education. I would like to express my appreciation to the Board of Education members for all the time and effort you put into a virtually thankless job. You're caught between the desire to be fiscally responsible and providing an excellent education for Hillsborough students, both of which are sometimes at odds, and you do this for no pay. I'm also grateful to Dr. Schiff for his efforts in treating teachers professionally and specifically for being quite aggressive in providing air conditioning for the high school's second floor, current problems notwithstanding, and that was without the incentive of a bonus. I would like to appeal to the board's ability to think and act creatively in order to achieve certain goals. For example, we relied on a referendum and other resources to be able to replace the turf and repair the middle school parking lot. And for the past several years, you nimbly dealt with the state's cap on superintendent's salaries by adding to Dr. Schiff's salaries through goal-driven bonuses. These bonuses totaled over twelve percent of his salary this past year. Interestingly, some of the bonus goals were district or state mandated. For example, teachers were required to participate in PLCs and to write SGOs. Even more interestingly, most of the goals rested on the backs of teachers and other staff members relying on them to achieve and measure the goals. You know, after many years of not doing so, teachers are finally following the contract. Historically, teachers have not merely followed the contract. They've put in countless hours of their own time, their family's time, to prepare their classrooms, communicate with parents, create activities, provide extra help, write letters of recommendations, advise clubs, et cetera. That et cetera is loaded. As a retired high school math teacher, I acknowledge I am probably ignorant of the many tasks that elementary school teachers, middle school teachers, secretaries, custodians, non-classroom professionals, aides, and so many other staff members perform for which they are not paid. But you know, it is the fault of the school personnel, and I say that as a guilty party myself, that they, we, have been expected to perform all of these extra, extremely time-consuming tasks without payment. They, we, have been educating our students for so long out of love for them and out of love for learning and teaching. That's what drove us into seeking education as a career in the first place. We have often filled in the gaps by sacrificing ourselves because we don't want our students and their education to be wanting. We have dangerously set a precedent and an expectation by constantly putting ourselves and our families second. You know that recently acquired air conditioning that I mentioned earlier? Before then, and probably now, teachers themselves provided multiple fans for their classrooms, and the fans were pointed towards their students and away from the teachers themselves. But there's a limit to what magic the teachers can perform with their limited time and resources. Now, as a retired teacher, like many others of a certain age, I live on a fixed income. But I consider myself lucky that my income is remaining fixed. Many paychecks of current faculty and staff are not increasing. They're not even remaining fixed like mine. They are decreasing. And at the same time, their workloads and expectations are increasing. In the words of Melissa Blevins, a very wise English teacher at Hillsborough High School, teachers have been donating their time and money, but they're not asking to be paid for their extra work. They're asking to be fairly paid for the work they are contractually required to do. Let me put this out there for each of you to consider. Which is more important, your job or your family? Too many times, teachers have put their career before their families, not because such actions resulted in accolades or monetary awards, but because it was best for their students. Please don't force teachers to make this difficult choice. Use your cleverness and creativity, as you have demonstrated in other situations, to provide a contract which the staff truly deserves.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Salinger. I'm a teacher here at Otten Road Intermediate School, and I'm also the Hillsborough Education Association treasurer. I wanted to thank the Board of Ed for briefly addressing the heat issue during your discussion, and that it sounded like maybe there'd be a policy or some sort of plan in place for future heat events, which we may have on Wednesday. Mr. Gillette, I think you asked about other schools in the area. I know when we talk about the area, we like to focus on Somerset County, but the email that I did send you on Friday, I did put a link to an NJ.com article in there that showed New Brunswick and Philadelphia and Chatten and other schools had closed, and they had done it ahead of time to give families time to plan, should that be the case. Dr. Schiff, you said, you know, other area schools are, did not close, and that is true. No other school in Somerset County closed. But we also, in Hillsborough, we like to say, we're not like the other schools. We had Chromebooks before everybody else. We like to take the lead. That could have been an area where we took the lead. And yes, some of our schools, or maybe all of them, do have some form of air conditioning. And one solution that you talked about was having them offer up those spaces to the classrooms who did not. And it's a Band-Aid, is all it is, because it's very nice if, A, if there's space, and then B, if it's practical. If you're doing a science lab on that day, to bring all that equipment into an air-conditioned space, it's just not practical. You're losing time. I did bring my class to the cafeteria on Friday at the end of the day. I took a picture and I took a brief video just to show that it's not a true learning environment. We were there strictly to cool off, because at that point, there were so many students in this cafeteria, to try to get any meaningful work done was really not going to be practical. So while, yes, it's a possible solution to have that as our only plan, it's just not practical. And as I mentioned in my email, it's not fair. All the students are not getting the same experience on that day. And then finally, you know, you mentioned early dismissals, you know, not doing it ahead of time, it's about the safety of the children, where would they go? We do have early dismissals on snow days when it's necessary to do that, and because it's best for the children, it's for their safety. So again, in my email, I mentioned the effects of heat. I had one student in my class who was about to have an asthma attack, and she had to go to the nurse. I heard reports of students who were getting hurt on playground equipment that was too hot, passing out, fainting, throwing up. If that's not a concern for the safety of children, then I don't know what is. So I please ask you to consider this moving forward. I hope it does go to a committee for some sort of solid policy, and I'm happy to join that committee when they have the discussion to give you some firsthand experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Salinger.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, Sixteen Laurel Drive. I have the benefit of being able to travel throughout the schools in this district. And one board member happened to ask, what was the cause of the mold, or where was this coming from, and the possible causes of it? I honestly have lost track of the number of schools that I have walked through where ceiling tiles are missing and water is running out of the ceiling into a garbage can. I've seen water coming out of light fixtures. I've seen water just cascading straight down. I've seen teachers and custodial staff switching over ten-gallon garbage cans filled with water. So the question of where is the mold coming from? The answer is, is it's, it's the result of our buildings. It's the result of what I spoke to a few meetings ago about the misaligned priorities and the fact that we are spending investments of millions of dollars on technology and various other things, but we have holes in our ceilings. We are putting students into rooms that are excessively hot. As I shared with the board, the area surrounding some of these schools was a hundred and fifteen degrees on Friday. So the blacktop that they walked out to, the playgrounds that they may have been on before it was canceled going outside, that was a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen degrees. Yet we sent them back to classrooms that didn't have air conditioning but had Chromebooks. And a brief internet search will show you, any manual for a device talks about the heat sinks. It talks about the fact that devices heat up, that you shouldn't leave it on your lap too long, you shouldn't leave it on furniture, because it poses a risk of fire or of burning them. So we send them back to a classroom with no air conditioning, poor circulation, high humidity, which adds to the mold growth, and then tell them to quietly use these devices, which add more heat to the classroom. We simply cannot continue the track that we are on. We need to realign our priorities and address the needs of Hillsborough students and Hillsborough staff and make sure that they have functioning classrooms, optimal learning environments, and quite honestly, no garbage cans collecting water in the hallway. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to hear.
Good evening. My name is Allison Tucker, and I've been an active participant in the field hockey program at the high school for all four years that I have attended. Prior, I played in eighth grade at the middle school. However, throughout my years of playing the sport that I love, I have never had a coach like Coach Gil Martin. My sophomore year, when she began coaching, I was unsure to how the season would play out, given the unexpected absence of the prior coach. Right from the start, Coach Gil Martin took immediate initiative to improve the team and push us to play to our full potential that she saw in each and every one of us. Towards the end of the season, I personally was struggling with anxiety off the field. This was a very difficult time for me, and at times, my anxiety would limit me from even attending school at one point. As you can probably infer, this caused me to miss some games and practices, which I feared would outcast me as a player, increasing my anxiety. Coach Gil Martin was more than understanding and expressed her support for what I was going through, acting not only as a coach, but as a mentor. If it weren't for her sincere concern and hand she reached out to me, I may have not returned to the program. Coach Gil Martin has encouraged us to perform to the best of our ability, both on and off the field. She acknowledges us as individuals with strengths and weaknesses, however, she pushes us to challenge ourselves. I can confidently say that you will never find a coach as genuinely and full-heartedly dedicated to not only the sport, but her players, as Coach Gil Martin. If ever there is a time where we are getting down on ourselves or getting frustrated, she always encourages us to push on and believe in ourselves. Our saying throughout the season was, you gotta believe. I believe that that is what Coach Gil Martin is all about, never giving up. This is why I refuse to give up on my coach, and I believe that we are all human, and despite wrongs that we may do, we all deserve another chance. As a senior, I hope to finish my last year playing the sport that I love with a coach whom I love just as much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I'd just like to clarify a statement you made about the building custodians getting a notice. I never got a memo, and as far as I know, no one got a memo about the mold at the high school. I found out from Henry Goodhue. And at first, they were going to have the custodians clean the cafeteria, I mean, the auditorium, but they weren't qualified to clean that. They didn't have, they weren't, they had to have a physical detector, respirators that you needed to use to clean. Just to clarify that, there wasn't any notice sent out. Now, we've been trained to look for mold in the past and everything, so we keep our eye on that all the time. But there was no notice that's sent out that there was a problem.
Right. I apologize, if you, my notice was sent to the building, we didn't send out to all the rest of the custodians. But my expectation is that Jim over at Woodford, if he sees something that doesn't look right, that you would report that, and we'd then report it to our environmental specialist. But you're basically looking at your building as the head custodian, and quite frankly, I think with your level of experience, really, if something doesn't look right, you would tell us and we'd report it immediately. So that.
Right, but you made a statement that you, there was a notice sent out to the building custodians.
Not to the building custodians. I apologize if that was misquoted.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
But, like I said, our expectation was that our custodians also are keeping, our head custodians are keeping an eye on the building. If something doesn't look right, obviously with the way you run your building, I'm sure you would notify us, and we would notify the environmental specialist.
All right. Thank you.
I live in Hillsborough. Just was listening to some of the comments already. And I believe that I've heard in the past that some parents have offered, maybe through the PTA, to provide AC units, but because of the infrastructure and the electrical load would be too much, that's been denied. So I was just wondering, I'm a numbers person, do you know how much it would cost to upgrade their remaining spaces to have AC?
Yeah, no, it's, we don't. I mean, it's a good question. We have not looked at the actual cost to quote exactly what it would cost to cool the entire district. Is that the question?
Yeah, we, we actually tasked our architect to look at two options. One is to do it right and do it well, and the other is to do it as inexpensively as possible. I don't remember the exact figures on it, but it was, it was very expensive to do it the way we should do it, which would require a building referendum, which would require support from the community and increase in taxes. The, and I may defer to Mr. Gillette, the chair, if you recall the details.
We took a look at this in Operations Committee over a year ago. Well, not too long ago. Brett was there. And I don't have that report with me, obviously, but we did, just as Dr. Schiff mentioned, we looked at a couple of different options, but even the least expensive option was quite costly.
There's also an ongoing.
So at that time, we decided that we would look, as we do a lot of things, we would look at incorporating some of these into our five-year plan. We had not started our, really working on our strategic plan at that point, and I think it's going to be something that we're going to look at when we lay out the, further prioritize the strategic plan.
Yeah, with regard to strategic plan, the physical environment is part of that enhancing student life pillar that I've made reference to a couple of meetings ago, so.
Okay, because I guess you could just possibly upgrade the, whatever you could do for the loads, you could have fans in the rooms in the meantime, maybe not as...
There are fans in all of those un-air-conditioned classrooms, but honestly, it wasn't enough for days like we saw last week. Ms. Salinger was talking about the idea of it's a Band-Aid, what we're trying to do, and I would agree with her in description of it. But it's a short-term solution to a long-term problem that I think we have to try to address in a fiscally responsible way, in a way that can build support, but hopefully look long-term at increasing cooling opportunities. But that's not going to happen instantaneously. And, you know, the board can debate, and probably will as part of the strategic planning process, whether to include items like increased cooling across the district as part of that strategic plan in the area that Mr. Kins was talking about.
Yeah, just kind of from...
Do you think it was maybe like a million dollars to do this, or?
It's on the order of magnitude of tens of millions of dollars. Again, so that falls into why it would be part of the strategic plan.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kitty Ward, Sunnymead Elementary School, first-grade teacher. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think we need to look at a several-prong approach because saying that we have fans in the classroom, I can tell you, I do have two ceiling fans. They are directly in the center of the room, so if we're all huddled in the center, we get some air. All the periphery gets absolutely no air, number one. Number two, today was a beautiful day. When we walked in the building, the buildings maintained the heat. It was not beautiful in the classroom until about this afternoon, and then it became comfortable, because in our particular building, the windows open in to the room. They don't slide up and down. And I'm not a physics person, but I know that unless the wind is blowing really hard, the wind doesn't blow in the windows. It blows against the window and then right back out, is what I feel. So again, the rooms don't cool down right away. So we need to look at the existing fans that we have. Are they enough for the room size that we have, the room sizes that we have? We need to look at whether we need to retrofit the building, put in window units, whatever the case may be. And then for the very extreme heats, and let's hope we don't have as many as we did, the last two days were really extreme, we should have a plan in place, and maybe we need to be like Hamilton and Trenton, and at least do an early release so that the children are getting a little bit of something, and not trying to put a Band-Aid and stick everybody in a library for 20 minutes or 30 minutes at a time with really nothing going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other public comment?
New business from the board? I mean, I'm just going to say stuff about what they talked about anyway, but I figured I'd sneak it in. So a couple of board members, or maybe it was Dr. Schiff and Tom, talked about policy as regard, in regard to temperature and heat. And this is something that's irked me for years now, probably, so I'll make my annual appeal on this, that we do not have, it's irked me that we do not have a policy specific to extreme temperature. Because it affects the students and it affects our entire staff. We have 1,000 employees. And this first came to my attention, I think around 2009, or maybe 2008, 2008 or '09, when we passed a policy, and I'll say this again, I've said it every year, concerning the welfare of school pets and live animals. And we have a policy about, you know, the proper care for animals that might be brought into the school. And during that discussion way back when, eight, seven or eight years ago, it was even revealed that fruit flies had to be properly cared for at the correct temperature. And at that time, I, you know, because who knows what could happen to the fruit, poor fruit flies. At that time, I pressed, at that time, for us to have a specific policy about temperature. We couldn't get it done. I mention it at least once a year, I think, and without a policy, the board has made it clear to Dr. Schiff, and he understands that he has the full board support anytime that he would like to close school, like give the instant alert out the night before, that we'll have a half-day the next day for extreme heat. I think, I know we've had turnover in the board, but I think he would still have full support of the board anytime he needed to do that. He's empowered with that, even in the absence of a specific policy. He's always empowered to do that. But that's, of course, his call, and we don't, I'm not going to characterize how I might personally feel about, you know, making those calls. Those are tough calls to make, any weather condition, early dismissals, or delayed openings, or school cancellations, those are tough calls. I like the idea that people talking about policy, again, I think we can, I think we can have a policy, I think we can start by looking to see if any other school districts in New Jersey, or, you know, maybe in Florida, or anywhere, or Texas, have a policy about extreme temperature. I think it would help, it would help aid the superintendent maybe in making that tough call. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Okay. All right, continuing on, we have action agenda.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel-related expenses and to accept the HIB self-assessments for 2015-2016.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items 9.1 through 9.2 of the action agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Datta? Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Continuing on, Dr. Schiff.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources. 10.1 has now been changed to motion to approve the suspension of a staff member whose name is on file in the superintendent's office. 10.2, motion to approve an additional suspension, to approve the resignations as listed, to rescind the employment contract, to approve contract changes, transfers and changes in assignment, revised transportation drivers, and various appointments, approve mentors and buddies for this school year, as well as approve student teachers, the science lab coverages, and six-period coverage, to pre-approve for extra-period coverage, summer work, and to approve the extended school year program for 2016-2017.
All right. I'll cut to the chase. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item 10.1 only at this point. Okay, second? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, this is for 10.1. Again, this has been revised to read, motion to approve suspension of staff member, and the recommended action is to approve the suspension with pay of a district staff member whose name is on file in the superintendent's office effective September 12, 2016, as attached. Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
No.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items 10.2 through 10.15. Second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Continuing on, Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve monthly financials, capital reserve transfer, approve the contract purchasing as attached, to accept donations, and approve the compliant resolution agreement for 2016-2017.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items 11.1 through 11.5.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Now we're at the second comment section from the public. I'd like to open that up to anybody who chooses to. Okay. Is that anything from the board? Just to echo earlier, as we all know, yesterday was the 15th anniversary of the tragic events of September 11th. Only those students in the high school were born before that fateful event. I hope that everybody took time yesterday to pause, reflect, and pray, and that may we never forget. Thank you. Any other announcements? Presidential privilege. All right. Now, that ends, we have the information as is listed in the agenda. Now I'd like to read a motion to go into executive session. Whereas, the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on June 9th. Resolved by the Board of Education, the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey is as follows. A, the matters to be discussed are negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association. B, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to go executive session. When we come back, there'll be no other additional business. We will not have any board actions, and then we will just adjourn.